Good evening and welcome to our regular board meeting of Tuesday, November the 6th, 2018. We have all trustees present. We have trustee Anthony Quinn of Oakville who is calling in and he is with us by phone. So when we make our comments or questions, we'll try to repeat them and please remind me to repeat them so that trustee Quinn can hear them because it can sometimes be very difficult. So now we will be doing our opening prayer, our national anthem, and our oath of citizenship and we'll ask our student trustee Denzel to lead us.
Thank you. Please join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us in the way we should go and protect those who please him. If we fall, we will not stay down because you, the Lord, will help us up. Good people's words are wise and are always fair. They keep the law of God in their heart and they never depart from it. We pray that our school board and the schools we represent will always be a place of welcome where all students, staff, and parents feel valued and included. Let us pray for all people here present tonight that they fulfill their potential and become a witness to the message of Jesus Christ. Together we pray for all those who are sick and all those who are not with us tonight. We also remember their family and friends and we ask God to give them the strength and comfort at this time of need. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much and thank you to Denzel for leading us this evening. Before we begin, I would just like to congratulate on behalf of the board, all the trustees elect, most of whom are sitting on the side here, I think, and trustee Carabella, of course, who are present this evening. We would also especially like to thank all candidates who put their name forward to run for a trustee position on this board. Their initiative and their interest in contributing to public service is truly admirable, so we do thank them and appreciate their contributions. So thank you. We would like to move on right now, please. Vice Chairman, I will begin with giving us the motions and the information adopted and respectively received in camera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Quinlan appointed as acting secondary vice principal at the Thomas Burton Center for Continuing Education effective November 20th, 2018, with an end date to be determined. Melissa Culver appointed as acting department head, mathematics, at John Vanier Catholic Secondary School effective October 22nd, 2018, with an end date to be determined but no later than August 31st, 2019. Caitlin Kurnick and Christina Sampson hired as probationary teachers effective October 15th, 2018. Aseta Fagladi hired as a probationary teacher effective October 17th, 2018. And I should also add that there were no motions adopted in camera as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And now at number two, the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee Carabella?
Denzel, I'm going to make a notice of motion, please.
Yes, that will be under information items at 10.4. And the title?
Transportation.
Transportation, thank you. We will add that to the agenda. Any other additions, deletions from the agenda? No? All right, thank you. May I have a mover, please, to approve the agenda? Trustee Michael, second to by, trustee Roe. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Declaration of conflicts of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest this evening? None? All right, thank you. We have no presentations. We do have two delegations. 5.1, retain the Extended French Immersion Program at St. Matthew Catholic Elementary Secondary School. We have Dr. Kusik, Ms. Renton, and I'm not sure it's Mr. or Ms. Zettel. Would you like to come forward, please, and Rosie will help you set up there at the presentation table? Thank you.
Please feel free to begin. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Teresa Renton and this is Carrie Zettel. And we are here on behalf of the concerned parents of St. Matthew Catholic School. Unfortunately, Dr. Kusik is unable to attend this evening and sends her regards. So the purpose of our meeting here tonight is we really want to outline for you the concerns that we have in regards to a decision that was made recently to take the Extended French program at St. Matt's and relocate it to St. Bernadette's in the 2019-2020 school year. So if we outline where the three key areas we'd like to address, it's really around the gap in transparency that we feel existed as part of this process and this decision to move this program at this particular time. Why was this decision made? The lack of stakeholder engagement in regards to the Extended French Immersion program. So why were the impacted stakeholders not invited to dialogue in regards to this very important issue and decision? And then third is really the anticipated negative impact on St. Matthew's Catholic School in regards to this decision, inclusive of the perceived conflict that we have with the board's stated community focus of achieving, believing, and belonging. So was the human cost of the current decision considered? So our process here tonight is to put the facts on the table as we understand them and look for clarification on some of these key issues and questions that we have. And really, the outcome that we're looking for is that we're looking for the board led by Director Daly to rescind the decision to relocate this program and look at making a different decision that includes a transparent and rigorous analysis that is conducted, that includes the input of all the affected stakeholders in regards and also in regards to determining what are the optimal locations for this programming in Oakville. So a few quick facts about St. Matt's. It's the number one Catholic elementary school in Oakville. It's widely referenced by realtors in terms of what's a great place, where is a great school district, where is a great place to invest, to live. And really, it's the academic excellence and also the language acquisition opportunities that exist within that particular district that are so compelling for people. So if you take a look out of the six elementary review areas in Oakville, the Glen Abbey area, CEO3, is the only, stated as the only mature catchment that's demonstrating enrollment growth. It's the only catchment out of the six that is truly demonstrating enrollment growth out of all of those areas. So that's very significant. And I think that links back up to the fact that the leadership, the teachers, and the community have achieved a lot of synergies and have created a special sort of magic in terms of how they educate and the programming that comes out of that school. So number one, the gap in transparency. When was the decision made to relocate the program? And what data was referenced in order to determine the long-term impact of these changes? And we take a look at the long-term capital plan put out by the board, it does not highlight St. Matt's for a program relocation. So an email that was delivered to parents on October 25th, very recently, was not directed to parents of children in the K through 3 cohort. So a big gap in transparency for all of those parents unaware of this major change that's impacting their lives moving forward. When we take a look at the Section 3.1 school programming in the capital plan, a maximum of two classes per site is permitted. Today, we have two classes per grade at St. Matt's and two classes per grade at St. Bernadette's. So then the question becomes, will there be less opportunity for both sets of students to participate in this valuable program? And then the other question is, how does this help children reach their fullest potential? So additional transparency is required. You take a look at the enrollment numbers at St. Matt's, they're projected to continue to grow out to 2022. What decision does this have on student enrollment moving forward, on overall school resourcing? What percentage of St. Matt's population is the result of this particular program? And then what percentage is the result of people applying cross-boundary to come in irrespective of the program? What other solutions were considered to minimize the impact on the St. Matt's community? So from our perspective, our takeaway is that we contend that there's been a lack of transparency regarding due diligence, the analytical criteria used, the impact assessment on soft factors, inclusive of children in community, as well as long-term implications. So this is not visible and does require clarity. In light of the missing stakeholder communication about this issue, we conducted a thorough analysis of historical board meetings in order to understand where the community could have gained insight into the decision-making process. We uncovered the following. In said analysis of board meeting recaps throughout the majority of 2018, there are no obvious signals indicating that St. Matt's would be considered for program phase-out and relocation during the 2019-2020 school year. These points are supported by the publicly accessible 2018 LTCP and clearly indicate that both St. Matthews and St. Bernadette's is offering Extended French programming. Section 7.2 Elementary Review Area of the LTCP specifically states the following recommendations pertaining to the CEO3 Glen Abbey School District. Short term, which are years 1 to 5, a school boundary review and French immersion program review should be conducted in 2020-21 to balance the overall enrollment across the CEO2 to 5, as there is an imbalance of enrollment across schools within these review areas. The long-term plans, 6 to 15 years, continue to monitor the enrollments. Section 8.2 Proposed Capital Projects, the LTCP states, "School Boundary Review, Program Review, and Pupil Accommodation Review." Processes include many opportunities for public consultation. Final decisions in these reviews are made by the Board of Trustees based on board policy. These projects are provided to allow public and stakeholders across Halton to review the board's future plans, opening the door for potential collaboration with stakeholders and align stakeholder capital plans with the board's future capital plans. As it pertains to the relocation of the Extended French program from St. Matt's, there does not appear to have been any opportunity for public engagement or consultation on this matter. It appears as though the board made a decision prior to their meeting on October 16th, 2018, to relocate the Extended French program from St. Matthews to St. Bernadette's. Under the Notification to Parents section, it states, "Extended French Program Notifications. Week of October 15th, 2018, an email will be sent to all parents in our system with children in grade 4. The email will contain details about the registration process and a link to a webinar with general information to parents." The only notification was sent out on October 25th, 2018, creating a gap of 5 to 9 business days versus previously stated on the board's commitment. This notification was only to grade 4 children, which indicated the program was relocating to St. Bernadette's the following year. When was the applicable program review completed? Why weren't the key stakeholders consulted as the board itself promised to do? What short and long-term implications were considered pertaining to St. Matt's community? Again, the key takeaway here is upon review of all publicly accessible information, the stakeholder community could reasonably assume that a program review would occur within the Glen Abbey Elementary Review Area, CEO3, in the 2020-21 timeframe. The expectation per board communication is that key stakeholders would be consulted. Regarding the sudden decision to relocate the said program to St. Bernadette's in the 2019-2020 timeframe, there was a clear lack of consultation with key stakeholders in the St. Matthews community. There can be no reasonable assumption that the community would have had any true indication of program changes until they viewed the board communication sent on October 25th, 2018. And this is in conflict with the board's publicly stated position that program review includes many opportunities for public consultation. So that brings us to our third point, and that's the anticipated negative impact on the community, inclusive of perceived conflict with the board's community focus of achieving, believing, and belonging. When parents register their child in any optional French program in our system, they are aware that they may be choosing to have their children in different schools and that in some cases, they are leaving their home community. So is this a reasonable expectation for a parent of children, for parents of children in a catchment where the Extended French program has been offered for close to 30 years, when no indications have been given of program changes? So as alluded to in the overview, people come into the catchment and they invest because they do so because of the language acquisition and the excellent academic opportunities afforded their children. So what we see at risk for St. Matt's community today, and this is just a few things, but families forced to choose between the well-being and emotional stability of their children versus academic benefits of the Extended French program. Declining volunteerism. So volunteerism, and we've sourced it in some of our background research, is very important. The school and students see great benefits. If we're asking parents to split their time between two different schools, we're at risk to see declining volunteerism within our community. And then the risk for students for increased stress and bullying as they switch and move to a new school. So from a key takeaway perspective, I think that means I met time. Can I just wrap up? Okay. So from a key takeaway perspective, we weren't as a community involved in the process or given advance notification of potential changes and were really left feeling disturbed and unsettled by the board's actions to make a decision without key stakeholder engagement and rigorous analytics as well.
Thank you. Time to move on. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
If you could just stay where you are for a minute. Trustees, do you have any questions of the presenters? Any questions? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Thank you for your delegation. I wanted to ask you, because I received a petition. Is that part of a petition that was signed about this whole aspect?
Yes, there is a petition, a change.org petition that is ongoing.
Was that started by you or?
It was started by the group, yes, the Concerned Parents Group, yes.
So and what was the signature count by?
Oh, I think the signature count, at last I had inquired, was up over around 313. Okay, there you go.
And you didn't think to submit it with this delegation or to submit it?
In what?
It's ongoing?
It's ongoing, yeah. It hasn't closed, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. in Halton Catholic District School Board Secondary Schools. Ms. Lim is going to make the presentation, just one of you? Okay. So Anthony, we are going into the transportation to AP and IB and we're ready to start in just a few minutes, as soon as the presenter is ready. Okay?
Thank you. I have it in front of me. I'll follow along.
I'm sure you are. That's good. Okay, start whenever you're ready, please.
Good evening. Before I begin, I want to first say thank you to those of you who showed consideration and support for the gifted programming delegations on the April 3rd and May 1st meetings. I was disappointed, though not surprised, by the recommendation in the staff report shared at the May 1st meeting for the following reasons. The report did not address the concerns about inadequate programming for all gifted students in the board. It did not include the needs of grade 7 and 8 students as the April 3rd motion requested or feedback from parents of current or future gifted secondary students. It did not acknowledge the ministry mandate and disport's legal requirement to meet the needs of every individual student with an identified exceptionality. I am here tonight to respond to the staff report and its misleading claims and to share testimonial from other parents. The staff report stated that the most relevant takeaway is that the majority of gifted students in the secondary schools report being satisfied or very satisfied with their current program. The survey was apparently conducted with all gifted students then enrolled in Halton Catholic Secondary Schools. The survey therefore excluded every student who left Halton Catholic because they were not able to access appropriate programming. This creates a significant bias in the group being surveyed. The survey then inquired each student's level of satisfaction in their current programming. The survey did not inquire as to whether students were in their first choice of programming or if they were even aware that other options existed. Neither AP nor IB is appropriate for all gifted learners and for some, neither is appropriate. The level of satisfaction in academic stream for a student who may not know about or be interested in an accelerated program is irrelevant in determining whether or not the needs of all gifted students can be met without access to accelerated programming. Finally, the vast majority of high school students have only experienced one programming option. Many students do not appreciate an accelerated program until they experienced it. To conclude that their needs are being fully met because they are currently satisfied or think they are in the only stream of programming that they have ever experienced is extremely flawed in reasoning. A biased survey can only produce biased results. When Superintendent Penali was asked about the number of gifted students who chose AP, she responded that some do, but not overwhelmingly. When my daughter delegated with her peers, they did tell you that 75% of their class preferred AP program is their choice, but half of them lived outside of the Holy Trinity boundary. Do you not wonder how many of these 17 students will actually end up attending the AP program at Holy Trinity come September? Well, I would bet, not overwhelmingly. Why? Simply due to lack of transportation. Also, Dr. Brown told me that I would find it encouraging that only 10 out of 90 gifted grade 8 students left the board in 2017. Does this sound encouraging to you? Would you say the same if one in every, one in nine autistic or developmentally delayed students left this board to have their needs met elsewhere? I sure hope not. You see, the response to the delegations overlooks something really critical. Giftedness is a ministry-defined exceptionality. Under the Education Act, the Ministry of Education mandates that all exceptional children in Ontario have available to them appropriate special education programs and services without payment of fees. This is because gifted students are at-risk learners. Gifted students are at risk for mental health issues and these risks are increased when their intellectual needs are not being met and/or they are not given the opportunity to interact with like-minded peers. Acceleration supports the social and emotional development of gifted students by placing them with other like-minded students. Accelerated students feel academically challenged and socially accepted. They don't need to hide their thirst for knowledge and challenge in fear of being judged or excluded. AP or IB is the only acceleration option that this board currently offers. Let me highlight how other boards have already taken advantage of AP/IB programs to support gifted learners. You can see highlighted in red on the screens there, the majority of school boards offering IB or AP combined with either clustered or congregated models. The from P listed up there, it offers IB as a designated choice and available with transportation. However, they also offer seven other secondary schools that have AP programs. I just want to clarify, some schools offer congregate model, which is made of gifted students exclusively, but majority of them, as you can see up there, they use the cluster model. This means that there are students in the courses who are gifted as well as highly abled that are invited by the teachers. This is a beautiful model for the acceleration that we can have because students can pick and choose which subject areas they would like to be accelerated in and feel just as included. In fact, this is what true inclusion is. They can still partake in all aspects of the school community while having the like-minded At the April 3rd board meeting, when Superintendent Penali was asked to comment on the percentage of gifted students in the AP program, she instead went on to talk about partnerships with outside agencies as she emphasized that there are not gifted programs and suggested that improving access to these programs for gifted students would somehow jeopardize those partnerships. I am sure that the above boards must have similar partnership arrangements with AP or IB programs and surely they have not jeopardized their standing. In the staff report, AP College Board Bylaw Section 11C was referenced to emphasize AP's non-discrepanatory practice. However, providing transportation to gifted students does not violate the equitable access to admission clause. The program will still be open to all students. Gifted students would not gain automatic entry to the AP program, they would just continue to follow the same application process. At the May 1st meeting, trustee Quinn's motion referenced more information from the delegate and any other parents who have concerns about their IAPs. Because the former superintendent of Special Education didn't seek any input from parents, we really had no idea of getting right information or available from stakeholders. In fact, after the May 1st meeting, when I inquired why such consultation did not take place, Dr. Brown told me it was because he valued student voice and that parents always want more. He said he would hear me out later if my daughter actually tries out the academic stream and isn't happy. Seriously? Don't our grade 8 students' voices matter? And what would be the remedy at that point? Also interesting to note, although Dr. Brown valued student voice, he did not find it valuable enough to consider the qualitative comments from the survey about the lack of challenge, enrichment, and IAP implementation many students shared. On May 1st, you also heard a delegation about one gifted student's experience in a regular stream classroom in our board. Did it really sound to you like that the student's needs were being adequately met before he accessed the AP program in high school? I don't have friends with gifted high school students. I do not have access to the board's data to contact gifted high school students' parents. So I did what I could and found two parents who wanted to share their experience with their gifted children. One from our board, who was fortunate enough to access IB but was not satisfied with the IAP implementation, and another from the Halton Public, whose kids went through gifted AP programming. Here are some common findings. IAP mainstream led to struggles, social skills, confidence level, and motivation improved in gifted classes. There were teachers who understand their unique learning needs. Students from Halton Catholic were switching to access programming at Halton Public. The ministry recognizes equity as a core provincial education priority. Sadly, however, the staff report you were presented with only focused on balancing the board's transportation budget and neglected the board's duty- board's transportation budget and neglected the board's duty to meet the needs of all special needs students regardless of cost. Equity is not sameness. Consider this example. You could have a special needs child with physical issues for whom perhaps the only special education funding needed was for transportation to an accessible building. No, I doubt anyone would say her transportation should not be allowed because it is unfair. The AP is the accessible building in the context of our gifted children. Please take a look. If I may, Madam Chair, I believe the previous delegation went to eleven minutes. If I could have one more minute, please? Yes. Thank you. Please take a look at the class survey. Ten lucky students will be able to attend their program of choice thanks to their parents' real estate decisions. Two will be leaving for private school. Thirteen students will potentially have to leave the board. You received several letters from other parents this past week and the common thread is that these students experienced mainstream, but they thrived in gifted programming. These students know what is best for them, yet their voices don't seem to matter. Conclusion. AP is essential for all gifted students to be successful. They should not have to forego Catholic education and without transportation to AP, my daughter will be joining many others as in previous years and many years to come to continue education without Christ. If this is such a systematic issue, why am I here alone tonight? I am here because many parents simply accept that Catholic board cannot keep up with the programming of the public board. I am here because I want to prove.
Your time is up. Please finish your sentence.
I'm here because I want to prove that we do not need one school board system to ensure the equity of all children in this province. I'm here because I believe in Catholic education. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
[applause] Trustee Quinn, you have any questions? Trustee Quinn?
Uh, I would like to make some clarification to understand if, uh, the response is that you said. The delegates, uh, the entire, uh, survey and the student response was shared publicly prior to, uh, the last week.
So what, let me just make sure I get this right, Anthony. Was the survey, uh, that was sent out shared during the past week?
But it was shared prior to the, uh, the past week when, when the chair sent it out to, to some of the, uh, the mailers.
Okay. Uh, was the survey shared before the last week when the chair sent it out to?
To those corresponding with you.
I'm sorry? The people corresponding?
To me with you.
Oh. Um, Andrea, do we know any of that? Okay.
I, I'm happy to answer that question.
Yes, please.
Because according to correspondence I read from, uh, Ms. Lorenko today, she did ask for a copy of the survey but did not receive it and the first time she came across it and I came across was through the correspondence package.
Ms. Lorenko did not ask for a copy of the survey from me. Um, Maria, I think you were referencing CAC?
No, I asked Dr. Brown to.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, are you asked Dr. Brian? Okay. Just bear with me. All right. So Superintendent Camillo, you're going to respond to that?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. I, I think I can, uh, offer some clarity. It's my understanding that the survey results were never shared publicly, uh, prior to just recently, your, your distribution, uh, you're sent to the correspondence. However, the highlights from the survey, the results from the survey were shared publicly. The actual survey results, the entire package was shared with all nine trustees, uh, last spring when it was completed. So the trustees were, had, had possession of it. The highlights, the results, the final results, uh, were shared publicly, but the actual, uh, full package was just shared recently with the correspondence through, through you.
Okay. All right, Nancy?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, and I think it is, uh, the results, the results won't share publicly and what I read is the results are much different than what was, uh, the public staff.
We'll answer.
Through you, Madam Chair. Once again, every trustee was given the full results in the spring. So Trustee Quinn would have had that entire package with all those comments that he's just seen recently in the spring.
Uh, and he would have got the entire package in the spring?
Right. I don't want to be concerned with the parents, uh, the children have not seen.
The parents of the children have not seen you before, correct?
Correct. They, they would have seen the, the high-level results, uh, the numerical data, uh, uh, as part of the, the, uh, information report that Dr. Brown presented. Correct?
Yes, you're correct, he says.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, trustees, do you have any other questions? Trustee Intimasi then Trustee Carabella?
Through you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you, Ms. Lim, for coming back again. Um, as, as you know, we don't have any results yet from the ministry on the transportation costs.
Yes, I understand.
But then I.
Sorry.
But then I'm wondering between the first time you delegated and now, have you taken this matter to CAC? I apologize because I've missed a couple of meetings. So I'm just wondering if you've taken it to CAC because CAC's mandate is to deal with these kinds of requests and once they get it, then it would certainly come back to us again. So I'm just wondering if you went to them at all.
So the history behind my delegation is that, yes, I did reach out to CAC's chair and I was con, uh, connected with Ms. Lorenko prior to my delegation because I had these concerns. That's how my delegation started.
So just for clarification, it did not go to the CAC table for discussion?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And the, the reason.
Can I add to that, please?
Okay.
Because Dr. Brown made it clear that this is not within the purview of special education.
Uh, with regard to the, um, presentation last May, the reason that you initially declined was very simply because we did not have the vision for student transportation, which is what we've been waiting for. So we were at that moment when we had that conversation, we were no further ahead than we had been last May. We were still in a wait and hold from the province.
I appreciate that. If I may.
Okay.
This is now November.
Yes.
And the deadline or the timeline they had envisioned was, um, end of fall. By the end of fall, as Dr. Brown said, there's no promise as to when. I did contact the ministry. They haven't responded to me whether this has been shelved with the new government, whether they will continue the actual report. And with the deadline around the corner for grade eight students, we could not wait because they have to make a decision.
We don't necessarily have money. Uh, Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The report has not been shared. Uh, it's, uh, we don't have a timeline for when it is, if it is going to be shared or if it's going to be acted on. Um, the ministry has been taking the time to understand before they act and make a decision and it very well may take some more time. So the, the initial timeline for the fall isn't going to be met. We are still waiting to see what the direction is, uh, not just for the transportation funding but for the GSN overall and for the pro, province overall. So, um, a, at this point, there's a, a number of uncertainties when it comes to funding provincially.
Thank you.
So all education funding then is in a hold? Do we have any possibilities? Any ideas of when they may release anything?
We are waiting for some consultations. They typically take place in November or December with the ministry where they would, um, provide us some information. They haven't yet been announced, so I don't have any details, but I'm hoping that in the next little while we will, uh, hear back and they inform their decisions into the next GSN which is typically released in March.
Madam Chair, if I may continue finishing answering your question, why I brought this back to the table when we were supposed to wait until reports done?
I, I don't have any expectation of you, but if you, I can give you a one minute because then we have to. Trustee Carabella, go ahead.
I just wanted to emphasize, I truly appreciate your position having to balance the budget for the school board. However, this should be provided regardless of the cost because it is a ministry mandate. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming, Mrs. Lim. Um, so this survey here is from your daughter's class?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I'm just going through it and I'm thinking, uh, is no one choosing the academic stream?
As far as I know, um, the difficulty with the survey was that, first of all, when I had to first start contacting parents, the only way I could reach out was through my daughter, through her peers, to the parents. I was actually asked to stop handing out letters to be sent home and then when my daughter wanted to do a survey, the classroom teacher told her she had to do it outside of the classroom time. It was extremely difficult for her. She prepared this together with her friends. These are the voices of the students in the class and as you can see, majority, other than the three unknowns, have selected IB, AP, or private schools or the public board's gifted programs.
Thank you. Trustee Intimasi?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, just out of curiosity, uh, perhaps one of the superintendents can, uh, let us know how many of the grade eights we lose by attrition every year?
Trustees, I'm sorry, Superintendent Cepriano?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, it's a good, excellent question because I inquired myself. I wanted to see contextually, uh, we do lose students. Ideally, we, we retain all of our grade eights. Uh, over the last five years, uh, through planning, through Fred Tivo, I found out that we lose approximately, on average, a hundred and fifty-four grade eight students a year, about seven percent of our grade eight population. So these ten students, these gifted students that, that, uh, we may be losing would be part of that one fifty-four, uh, the ten out of the ninety out of, out of last year. So the percentage is a little bit higher, sorry, the percentage is a little bit higher than, than, uh, than our total, total population, but not, it's not excessively higher, uh, because of many different reasons. Again, people move out of the region, people choose different, uh, uh, may go to the public board, may go to private schools. So it's not completely in line, but it's, it's not completely out of line with, with our, our regular track grade eight students.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Lim at this moment? No? Then we will come back to this a little bit later on.
Thank you very much.
Before we keep you waiting too long. All right. So Trustee Quinn, did you have any more questions on this matter?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, so let's just see where we are at. Approval of the minutes, six point one minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular board meeting. Can I have a mover, please? Trustee Rose, seconded by Trustee Michael. Any questions to the minutes? All in favor? Thank, thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Uh, so, uh, business, number seven, business arising from previous, um, meetings on page forty-three of your package and I think that we've got those covered, the transportation which we're doing right now and student trustees on the board, uh, fall of two thousand and eighteen, approval as amended. So everything's underway there. No questions on that? No? Okay. Excellent. So now we're going into action items and the first one is the response to the delegation. So I'm going to read, uh, the process that we will follow. The first delegation that we will, um, take up is the extended French immersion followed by the transportation to IB and IP. AP and IB. Okay. So in accordance with policy one dash zero six, delegation to the board, trustees may move a motion to one, make a decision on the presentation at the same meeting, which is tonight. Two, refer the matter to a future meeting. Three, request a staff port, report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting or four, receive as information. This evening, we've had delegations regarding two separate subjects and therefore we will respond to them separately. So right now, we're looking at the extended French pertaining to St. Matthews. I, are you gonna try and brush me? Are you gonna make a motion?
Are you recognizing me?
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we decide on extended French, uh, immersion program at St. Matthews tonight.
Okay. A second, please. Trustee Carabella? All right. It's on the floor.
Uh, sure. Uh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Chair, can you repeat Anthony Danko's motion, please?
Could you repeat your motion, Anthony?
Madam Chair, I'm just moving that we make a decision on the first delegation tonight.
Seconded by Trustee Carabella. So are there any questions or comments with regard to, um, making a decision tonight? That's all we're doing is making a decision tonight. We're not making a decision one way or the other way at this moment. That was not the motion. The motion was to deal with it tonight. Trust, right? Trustee Intimasi?
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I would, um, suggest and I'm okay with, uh, Trustee Danko's motion. It just, to me, dealing with it means that we get a staff report for some extra detail because I don't know that staff's had a, a moment to address all the questions that are in here. We've simply got all the questions and there are a lot of good questions, but I think we need comprehensive answers and that would give the superintendent in charge time to do that. Also, we have a new director and, uh, perhaps he needs some time and we're going to have some new trustees, uh, who will also have to live with whatever this decision is. So I think that would be the fairest decision.
And you maintain amendment?
Uh, yes, I believe that I would move to make an amendment to the original motion to have a staff report to allow sufficient time.
Uh, sure. Yes.
If I may respond to that? If I may respond to?
Okay. So the amendment is on the floor that we, uh, get a staff report pertaining to the question that had been raised by the delegation. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There, there's no need for a staff, for a staff report on this. We can simply ask them tonight why the decision was made. They're sitting right behind us, behind me at least, and we can have that question answered as to why, what, what information they have. That can be shared in a matter of a few minutes. So I think that this amendment's not, uh, uh, not needed. Uh, there's no further delay required. We can simply ask staff right now why, uh, what information they want to present to us about this decision.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else want to comment on the amendment that we talked about, the amendment, which is a staff report? And, uh, the, yes, you know, the chair.
Uh, I see the director had his hand sort of half up and I didn't know if he wanted to make a, a comment or not.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, it echoes a little bit what, um, Trustee Danko mentioned. Uh, we did bring this information at our previous board meeting. We did explain the rationale between the decision, uh, around the decision that was made. Uh, it really is an operational matter. Um, it, there is a history of, uh, decisions being made in the past with regards to relocation of French programs. It does not involve, uh, a boundary review. Uh, our policy, our admin procedure does support, uh, uh, us going forward in the direction that we, that we outlined at our last meeting. Uh, so I'd be happy to reiterate what went into our decision-making, uh, if that's helpful.
Okay. Uh, so would you like to hear what went into the decision? Is that okay with the two people? All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as we reviewed at our last board meeting, when we were looking at French program locations across the board, uh, we had a couple of, uh, goals in mind. Uh, one was to ensure that programs are located in schools that can accommodate growth, that could minimize or possibly eliminate future relocations. We were hoping to align our extended French programs, elementary boundaries with secondary school boundaries to their feeder schools. Uh, we're hoping to minimize the use of portables across the system. Where feasible, we also hope to, uh, increase our extended French offerings where that was possible. It wasn't possible in all municipalities. And in, uh, considering those, we also looked at, uh, ensuring that any students who are in an existing program at a school would be able to finish their placement at that school. With regards to Oakville in particular, um, which is, uh, really had kind of the most stable demand for the extended French program, um, St. Bernadette's was selected as a, as a location to remain because it has a sustainable core regular track enrollment. Um, it has the ability to house a program within the school. In, at St. Matthews, we've had to increase utilization of portables and it's really become unnecessary, uh, by relocating the program.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the director on what he's just said? No? All right. Uh, Trustee Intimasi and, I think it was Trustee Trice, do you wish to, um, withdraw or do you wish to run with it?
I'd, I'd like to withdraw on my end.
Withdraw, and Trustee Trice? Okay. So we're back to the first motion and, um, could you read that, please, Rosie? Do we deal with it immediately? That was the, that was basically it. All right. So, uh, we're going to be dealing with it immediately. I'm just not quite sure right now what it is going to look like because we do not have a motion on the floor, just that we're going to be doing, dealing with it. So do I have a motion from the trustee? Yours was just to say deal with it, right?
No, I, uh, and we went to the next step. A couple of comments.
No, excuse me, no, no, I'm sorry. Yes.
Through you to trustee Danko. The conversation we've had, the attempted amendment that has been dropped, is that sufficient for you to say it has been dealt with? Because we've had a review of the reasons why. Just because I'm trying to figure out what, what, what are we voting on?
We're not quite sure at this point in time.
But we have had some interactions. Is that sufficient, as part of you saying we need to deal with it now?
So, if we're going to deal, he wants a vote saying we're going to deal with it now. Is that what you would like?
Are you recognizing me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I will let my fellow board members know that I, my plan, what I intend to do is to deal with the issue tonight, and to move that we retain the extended French program at St. Matthews. That's gonna be my next motion. Well, our policy says that we decide whether we're gonna deal with it tonight or not. So, one of those motions has to pass or fail. And then, depending on what that is, then there's a next motion to decide it.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor is that we deal with it tonight, and we're taking the vote right now. It will be a recorded vote. Trustee Quinn? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, the director's just speaking for a minute, so trustee Quinn, and I'll get back to you.
I just want to remind you, with all due respect to the Board of Trustees, that our procedure VI fifty-three does give the Director of Education the discretion to relocate a French program in elementary or secondary where the need arises, to identify new locations where programs can be offered, and to alter the designated feeder schools associated to a school offering a French program.
Trustee Quinn, did you have something to add?
Maybe just further to what Director, through you, Madam Chair, further to what Director Daly has said. I can't help but go back to the words, which is part of our, our policy, that when parents register their children for any optional French program, they are aware that they may be choosing to have their children in different schools, and that in some cases, they are leaving their home community. So, I think that's a forward to what could happen. And I tend to agree, this is an operational matter, for sure. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to that before we take the vote? I think it was William, and then Arlene, and then Anthony. Go ahead, William.
So, was the decision to move the French program solely because of space and lowering the amount of portables? Or has there been a greater increase for the French program from students from St. Bernadette versus students from St. Math?
Through you, Madam Chair. Decisions around French relocation, or French programs in general, we tried to address those four or five goals that I outlined at the beginning of the evening.
Thank you. Trustee Intamasi, and then trustee Danko.
I just wanted to say, Madam Chair, that I concur with trustee Trice, that we know that the French is like a moving target sometimes. And for those of us that were on the committee that did all the French programming review, we were, you know, we unanimously decided that we would maintain our programs, all three programs. But certainly, that there was going to be some sacrifices, and there were gonna be some bumps and bruises along the way. And I think this might just be one of the bumps and bruises. And I know nobody likes it, and we don't like it any better than anybody else. But these are not easy decisions, and I don't think staff just pulls it out of the air. They do a lot of research to get there. So, I'm, I'm in support of letting them do their operational thing.
Yeah, it is operational, and this is not the first school that's had to go through this. Trustee Danko, and then we'll take the vote.
Madam Chair, with respect, the public has brought this issue before us tonight for us to decide. And this elected Board of Trustees is the body that makes the decision. It is not an administrative procedure that this is subject to. It is subject to a decision of the board, and the Director of Education answers to the Board of Directors, to the Board of Trustees. And that's why we're going to decide this issue tonight.
Okay, back to the vote. Trustee Quinn, you are supporting trustee Danko's motion?
Yes, I'll deal with it tonight, thank you.
Okay. So, we're dealing with it tonight. That's the motion that you've got on?
So far.
So far, okay. So, trustee Quinn is supporting that motion. Trustee William?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Denzel?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Ray?
In favor.
Trustee Trice?
Opposed.
You don't want to deal with it tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, okay.
In favor.
Okay. Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Intamasi?
In favor.
Trustee Stephanie?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I bear resolve that the Director of Education retain the extended French immersion program at St. Matthews Catholic School.
Carabella.
Did you hear the motion, trustee Quinn? Question, I'll be going in.
Through you, Madam Chair. The only consultation that would have happened, and I guess I wouldn't characterize it as consultation, is parents are aware, at our optional French programs, that programs can be subject to relocation. But in terms of this specific relocation, there wasn't a consultation with, with the parents under, under the procedure. It's, it's not, it's not required.
Thank you. All right, so, excuse me, no, I'm sorry. So, are we ready for the vote? We've got a mover, and that was trustee Carabella. You moved that? Second it, second it, sorry. Yes, go up, go ahead. Three or four kilometers? I'm sorry? William?
Through you, Madam Chair, it's two point six kilometers.
Thank you so much. Excellent. Okay.
On the, if I may. So, I think there is a, there's a variety of issues here. I think one of the themes maybe of this year is a greater need for consultation with the community. I, I think you're always going to, you know, have people who are upset about specific situations of programming at certain schools. But I think to build in the trust of the community, sometimes it helps to put this information out in advance, and then to gather information from the school communities themselves who are affected. And, and I think, you know, frankly, if there's, if there is, we should be expanding these programs, because there's clear demand within Oakville itself for this, because you see it within the other school districts. But the big, but the big, but I, but I understand the, the concerns around it that the director has suggested. But I, I do, I don't think this should be a procedure. I think that the Board of Trustees has to have a role in this, in these programming decisions, or there's no point of having a board at all. So, look, I think that the changes can be made throughout the year. But it should stay here until there is further consultation with the community. A proper consultation can be done. Obviously, a new board is elected. They can gather that information. Staff can make their case, the community can make their case, and then the decision can be made.
This is an operational matter, because it's a space issue. It's the amount of portables they can put on a site. It's the amount of students they can put on a site. It's as simple as that. Okay, we're going for the vote? Okay? Yes, please, go ahead.
It's through you to trustee Danko. Does he envision St. Matthews retaining their French program and the other sites that senior staff listed also being maintained? Or for them to retain St. Matthews, and then move around the other schools and helping it up?
Through you, Madam Chair. The decision is only regarding St. Matthews, and retaining that locate, being that location for the extended French program.
We're talking about St. Matthews only this evening, Anthony. Okay? So, trustee Trice, do you have a question?
Actually, just a comment. I remember at the end, it would have been in May or June last year, we had the French ad hoc committee about our programming. And I felt that trustee Intamasi, who said it so much better than I can, and probably has a better memory. But the upshot of it was, that she mentioned as we go through this, and we did keep our programs, and if I recall, we're gonna have something about extending them. But anyhow, she did mention there would be bumps along the way. But I remember her clearly asking that as these things came up, we would have to work together and be accepting. Some of the bumps are really tough. Just because we acknowledge it doesn't make it every easy, any easier. But I do think this was one of those times that she mentioned that I feel I should remember, that we have to keep working together, even if specifically, it isn't what we want to see happen. And again, like I said, I thought trustee Intamasi said it so much better than I. But I do think this is, and it will probably come up again in the future. Just a general comment.
Thank you. Any other comments from trustees? Are we ready for the vote? Okay? So, the vote, can you repeat the motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Anthony? Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Trustee Quinn is declaring a conflict of interest in this matter, on the vote. Anyone else want to declare a conflict of interest while we're here? I did ask at the beginning, but I'm happy to take them at any time, as you feel fit. Okay, no? All right, so, where were we? Could you repeat the motion, please?
I bear resolve that the Director of Education retain the extended French, French program, extended French immersion program at St. Matthew's Catholic Elementary School.
Thank you. Are we ready for the vote? And I guess the chair will vote on this, too. All right, trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor.
In favor of maintaining, right? Okay. Trustee Stephanie?
Opposed.
Trustee Intamasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Michael?
Opposed.
Trustee Trice?
Opposed.
I'm opposed, Vice Chairman Ray?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Row? I'm sorry, trustee Denzel?
Opposed.
Thank you. Trustee Row?
Opposed.
Trustee William?
Opposed.
Okay, so that is a five to three? Am I correct? Correct. All right, so, opposed. Right? So, the, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Daly. The decision about the continuance of the French immersion at St. Matthews remains an operational matter? Would you like to remind us what that means, just briefly?
Just that by our, our operating procedure allows for relocating French programs, both at elementary and secondary, when there's no boundary review, or school review in place where the need arises.
So, to the, the two ladies who delegated so well, thank you so much. And thank you very much to St. Matthews community for all the work you did collaboratively and individually on putting this together and coming this evening. The delegate team will receive an official letter from the board, and it will be sent to you from Director Daly, who is secretary to the board. Okay, so, thank you so much for coming this evening. You're welcome. We'll give you a few minutes if you wish to leave, but you're most welcome to stay, of course. Thank you for coming. We will now move on, in a minute or two. We'll just give people some time to discussing the APIB situation. Okay, we're just taking a minute's break to let people leave, Anthony. All right, now, we will go on to our second delegation. So, I will repeat the response, instructions that come to us from the policy. In accordance with policy I dash zero six, delegation to the board, trustees may move a motion to one, make a decision on the presentation at the same meeting. Two, refer the matter to a future meeting. Three, request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting, or receive as information. So, I open up the floor for any trustee motions regarding the delegation about transportation to AP and/or IB program for gifted students in the Holton Catholic District School Board's secondary schools. Trustee, trustee Intamasi?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would just move that we accept the delegation's information, as we've had this delegation before, and we are still awaiting ministry response.
Thank you. Can I have a seconder? Thank you. So, that's trustee Row? All right. Any comments? Trustee Danko?
I'll be voting against that motion, because I want to deal with it at a future meeting. Hopefully, the next one.
Right now, we have, we have this one on the floor. Any other comments? Trustee Quinn, do you have any comments on trustee Intamasi's motion?
Yes, please, Madam Chair, through you. I'm wondering what the potential effects could be for-
Thank you. We'll ask senior staff, and I'm not quite sure whether it's Superintendent Penelly, or Superintendent Row, or Superintendent Sepriano?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Basically, what would be the, any impact that would come to the board for not, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, any impact that would come to the board for not providing this transportation? Am I understanding you? Human rights perspective? Human rights complaints and appeals to the ombudsman?
Through you, Madam Chair. We're legally obligated under the Act, and under the Special Education Ontario Policy Resource Guidelines two thousand and seventeen, to offer a range of placements to all of our students with special needs. It's not a requirement that every identification of exceptionality be offered all five options, that we just offer a range of placements across the system. For our secondary students who are identified as gifted, intellectually gifted, they do have in our system two options. Option one, option two, that they are offered and take advantage of in our secondary schools. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but from, our, our programs have been reviewed, and they have been subject to scrutiny, and they have been upheld in the past. And so, again, I can't, anyone is welcome at any time to bring forth a human rights case against a corporation, a board, individual. But we do meet the obligations and legislation under the Act.
Can I ask Superintendent Penelly? Because you've been with the APIB program since its inception in this board, I believe?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I really appreciate being given the opportunity to correct a few comments that were made. And I concur with what my colleague is saying. There's no way, AP and IB are not gifted programs. Very clearly, we stated that right from the get-go when we started implementing. Do these programs, are they open to gifted students? Absolutely. They're inclusive. They're open to any student who meets the criteria for admission to these programs. At no point in time have we denied any students, any of these programs. It's interesting, some, that chart that is currently up there. It's interesting, because I also was quoted as overwhelmingly students not attending the programs. Well, I, I do have the numbers, and I do have the percentage. And the reason why I don't publicly open up, because of the short, small numbers, that it would be potentially jeopardizing the privacy of students. So, last year, for example, if we take a look at St. Andrews, If I look at IB, and I'm just going to, and in that cohort, I'm just looking at last year's, which are our current grade nine cohort, those students, as I said, I'm not going to give you exact numbers, but the vast majority of those fourteen students did end up going into the AP program at Holy Trinity. However, what was really surprising is that some of them found their way also to IB on their own, because that was the program that the parents and the students chose to go to. But a good percentage chose, believe it or not, to go to the public system, and they didn't even choose gifted program. So, again, the options are there. And going back to your initial question, and I have the, the data for assumption, and I have, again, STA in terms of the percentage of gifted, gifted students. And we are also getting gifted students from the public system coming to ours. So there is a cross pollination sort of, between the two Boards. So, again, parents choose, and they attend, and they pick the programs that's best suited for their child. So I can't comment on transportation, but I do, I, I do have the numbers. And as I said, I'm trying to give you an overview without really giving you the possibility of being identifying the students, because they are a small number in the grand scheme. And some students choose not to take these programs as gifted students. They choose to go into the regular mainstream at the secondary level. And again, that's a, a personal choice with their parent as to what they choose, because that's their choice.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions for Superintendent Penelli or Superintendent Cipriano? I'll get to you. No? Okay. Trustee Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a, just a couple of points. First and foremost, we talked about grade, grade eight retention rate. And I know consistently, my area, Halton Hills, has always had ninety-nine percent retention of grade eights. Secondly, this is being looked at from one, one school's point of view, one group of parents' point of view. Our job is to make a decision for the entire Board. And, and, and I don't, I don't see the need for, for this at, across the Board, because it's not going to be very economically feasible to start with. And as Superintendent Penelli said, you know, it really depends on the uptake and, and the choices of the child that, that particular year. And then the bottom line is the provincial funding. We don't know where we stand. And so I would not be making a decision to spend money at this point until, until things are clarified. And, and then, then we can take a look at what the ministry will fund and what the ministry won't fund. So, so I would just receive this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn, you had a comment or a question? You intend to vote against trustee Intomasi's motion, because you would, do you have a motion on the floor? I can't remember. It's that long ago?
Yes, just to accept his information only.
Or receive his information. Who seconded it? Oh, that's right, yes. Sorry, I'm getting a headache. So basically, trustee Quinn would like to see this, he's going to oppose that motion because he would like to see a staff report and more information from Superintendent Cipriano and Superintendent Penelli and also the lawyers. Am I correct, Anthony?
Madam Chair, as the last report was authored by the no longer employees on Board.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear that this wasn't a, a personal decision of Dr. Brown's or our former Director Paula Dawson. It was a collaborative result of information from the Research Department, from working with our consultants, special education consultants, coordinators, all of our special education staff. So it wasn't, although it was authored by Dr. Brown, it wasn't a decision of Dr. Brown. It was a decision based on all the, the data, number one. Number two, I, I want to, I, maybe I was, I didn't make myself clear earlier. We have a special education annual plan as a, as a school board. That annual plan is presented to SEAC on a yearly basis. It's presented to the Ministry of Education to be audited as well. Within that plan, it outlines all of our specialty classes and all of our placement options, including elementary and secondary, including all of our exceptionalities, including gifted. And it has been, again, this plan, which demonstrates our secondary gifted options as being option one or two, option, just for your information, indirect support option one, or resource support option two, that has been approved for, again, I, I'm guessing at least for the last eight to ten years. That part of the plan has not changed. We've added contained classes, but it, within the secondary gifted portion, that hasn't changed. It has been approved and reviewed by the ministry. So again, when I suggested earlier, I'm not a lawyer, my suggestion was only that you can always receive a human rights, human rights complaint. I feel that we would, could easily defend it. I think it's defendable, because the ministry has approved our plan for the last eight to ten years.
Anthony, I should have taken you first, because that's where you said. What's, what's your vote? Against Arlene's, it was? Opposed? Okay. Okay, opposed. All right. Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Denzel?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Murray?
Opposed.
I'm in favor. Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Stephanie?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is that six to nine? Five, five to nine? Five, four? One, two, three, four. Okay, five, four. So that is received as information. So we thank most sincerely everyone who's worked very hard on their presentation tonight, and an excellent delegation. So we do thank everyone involved, especially, of course, Ms. Lim, who presented this evening. And you will receive a written, the delegation always receives a written letter signed by the Director of Education, who is also Secretary of the Board, indicating that the report and your request has been received as information. So we thank you. We'll give you a minute or two if you wish to leave, and you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the Board meeting as, as you wish. So thank you very much. All right. Trustees, we're moving on. We have, let me just see, eight point two, policy I dash forty-five, transparency and accountability and executive compensation, third reading, Vice Chair Murray.
Yeah, I think we're just also waiting on a trustee, but I'll read slowly. I have, I'll read slowly. There's a trustee who's just out of the room, but that's, we'll, we'll have a discussion. If I may, so bring this from the policy committee. Be it resolved that Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee, the policy I dash forty-five, transparency and accountability and executive compensation be approved at third reading. Please, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So Vice Chair Murray has moved his presentation, third reading. Can I have a second, please? Trustee Carabella? All right. Go ahead.
May I speak to it? Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I think, just a few comments, because we've seen this policy quite a few times before. I think this has been a, a positive collaborative approach between trustees, and is frankly a nice starting policy on this issue for this Board. I think it's unique in the, in the province. This is a policy that's been voted on unanimously by trustees five times over the past five months. Particularly, I want to thank trustee Danko for helping put in language about connecting the strategic plan to the Directors and Superintendent's objectives, to, to Arlene and Mark, that brought the point of, of maybe not bringing up specific compensation itself and, and specific merit-based pay, because they were on point when said there's such a changing provincial landscape, that it may not be appropriate at this time to put in such a specific language. Diane, always for clarifying much of the language, which, which is always is very helpful. And, and those are just a few examples. So I, I think we had a, a good consultation that went out for, for a, a long period with public and stakeholders responding with very helpful feedback. One of the feedbacks was just to get a, a better legal review of it, which was, which was good. It confirmed the policy is fully compliant with provincial legislation and regulation. And the final comment I wanted to make was, I think it is a more clear annual process for this Board on, on executive compensation and possible changes that may occur with them for both the Board and the public going forward. So thank you.
Any, any questions? Any comments on this? So we've seen it many, many times now. I think it's our most popular one that keeps coming back. Trustee Quinn, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
All right. We'll take the vote. So all in, and I'll do it to trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Stephanie?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Vice Chair Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Denzel?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee William?
In favor.
Thank you very much. It passes.
Trustee Quinn, in favor?
I'm sorry, trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Sorry. Didn't mean to forget you there. You were so quiet, Anthony. All right. So thank you very much. We are now, oh, yes, we've got this other little one of yours, Paul, we have to take care of.
Yes.
Eight point three, transparency and accountability and executive compensation. It comes to us on a notice of motion from Vice Chair Murray.
I would like to remove this, please, as it is now redundant with the policy.
Thank you. So we're going to remove that? Okay, Rosie, we don't need anything else on that, do we now? All right. We're into staff reports now. Nine point one, history and geography resource selection, Superintendent Prokathen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, this is regarding a history and geography resource selection for grades seven and eight, a core resource, Nelson History seven, eight, Nelson Geo seven, and Nelson Geo eight. This did not require a textbook selection committee, since these are single-source publications for which there are no other alternatives, although we did have several teachers in our system who were provided with a limited number of texts and teacher support documents to inform the decision-making process. This is a blended print and digital format, which ensures content will be updated and enhanced through the life of the resource. The expenditure summary is outlined therein for you, and the concluding comments are that the resource would support grade seven and eight teachers in addressing the required curriculum expectations for history and geography, while recognizing the diverse learning needs of the students in our schools. The program promotes the development of twenty-first century competencies such as critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and innovative thinking within a Catholic context. Welcome any questions trustees may have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions on the resources? And we'll see that next meeting for action, right? Okay, thank you. A student, trustee update under information items. Trustee Denzel?
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. So recently, in the past month of October, the three of us, Stephanie, Will, and myself, attended the OSA ECO Fall General Meeting. And this was just a fundamental conference hosted in downtown Toronto, where the three of us just got to know more about our role as a trustee. Foresee the Problem be the Solution Initiative coming up on November thirteenth. The Senators are all aware and prepared for the launch at Holy Trinity. At the Ontario Student Leadership Conference, which happened on Sunday to today, three of our high schools at this school board attended a three-day, two-night conference at Niagara Falls. Holy Trinity, Christ the King, and Jean Vanier were all part of this conference. And in, in light of this, I am also proud to announce that Jean Vanier won an incredible award during the conference. They won the Most Spirited School Award, which, whereas they were recognized for their embodiment of this school board's motto, where all students achieve, believe, and belong.
Very good. We congratulate Jean Vanier. Excellent. Thank you.
Also, in light of that, we, the three of us are also attending a lobby day on Tuesday, November twenty-seventh. This is just the Catholic Education Lobby Day, also in Toronto. At our previous Senate meeting on Tuesday, October ninth, at Christ the King Catholic Secondary, we spoke with our student centers in light of just asking some sort of future initiatives that they would like to bring forward for next year. And at our next meeting, which is next week, on Tuesday, November thirteenth, we will decide on a certain possible initiative that we would like to bring to the Board table again.
Look forward to hearing it. That sounds interesting. Thank you. Do your colleagues have anything to add, or? No? We're good? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Excellent work, as always, from our student trustees. Ten point two, school educational field trips, Superintendent Penelli.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Please sign attached a list of the approved school educational trips, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from trustees.
Thank you. Any questions on school field trips? Problem is that they're getting increasingly expensive. Any questions? No? All right. Thank you. Then, let's just see next. Ten point three, Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School Capital Priorities Business Case Submission, Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. On September fifth, two thousand seventeen, the Board had approved Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School as the second capital priority for ministry submission. On March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the ministry informed the Board that this priority was not funded, but they, they were aware that this was top of the list and time-sensitive, and that it would be top of mind in the next round of submission. With the current change in government, there is no direction as to when or how the new capital funding submission process may take place. And currently, we are faced with increasing growth in Milton, and we simply cannot wait until something gets identified for us. As such, we will be submitting a business case, on an urgent business case, to the ministry. We're going to work with the ministry. We're going to work with the staff and our representatives to see how we can move this forward and address the needs for overcapacity in Milton. And myself, Director Daley, would be happy to take any, any questions trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy. Trustee Quinn, do you have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other, any other trustees have questions at all? Or the Director or the Superintendent of Business? No? Okay. Thank you very much, and we do definitely need that high school in Milton, so let's pray on that. Correspondents, so you have a list of correspondents there? Oh, I'm sorry. I almost forgot you, didn't I? I'm sorry. Ten point four, notice of motion, trustee Carabella.
Thank you. So it's brief. Be it resolved that Halton Catholic District School Board will provide transportation to identified gifted students with an IEP to an AP program if one is not available in their catchment area if requested.
All right. Would you make sure that Rosie gets a copy of that, please, trustee Carabella? And that will be on as an action item in the next Board meeting. Okay? Anything else? Okay, anything else? Let's just see. We have our correspondence, there's a list there and I think I've responded to all of those. Do we have any open question periods? No, we have nothing there. We do not have to go back into in camera. Um we do not have any absentees and we're very appreciative of uh trustee Quinn for hanging in there. It's hard at the other end of the phone. Um so um we're going to adjourn and trustee Quinn, you have the closing prayer. Are you still prepared to do that? Okay, we're going to, we're going to adjourn and then you're on the sheet for the closing prayer trustee Quinn. Would you like us to have someone else do that?
Yes, please.
Okay, no problem. Uh can I have a motion to adjourn please? Trustee Michael seconded by trustee Trites. Um all in favor? Thank you very much. Uh would someone like to offer the prayer this evening? Trustee Trites.
Thank you Madam Chair. We'll say in our Father, if you'd join us in the sign of our faith, in the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy holy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on this earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, since we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
All right, um thank you everyone. A very safe journey home. I hear it's windy. And thank you very much to our guests and our trustees elect who are on the learning curve right now. Thank you for coming.